All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:31. And we'll start with our public input period.
I just want to acknowledge that I was pleased that Mr. Herron got the notice in the Carrington News. And he's got three months at a time. I think that's appropriate. To do it every month, I think you'd forget occasionally. And by doing it in three months, that should not be a problem. So if you guys are happy with that, I'm happy with it.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I know, their deadlines are tough. The amount of time you need to have this stuff in there at a time. So if the three months works great, then we'll relay that to you.
Yeah.
Do we have any announcements? Financials?
Okay, so I brought the manifest. They do look large because it is beginning of the school year, when we typically have the most purchase rate. So I'll let you sign those and pick those up before I leave. In your board pack is the first current year financial. It doesn't have that handy dandy sheet where I compare to the prior month because there is no prior month. This is the first one of the year. So next month, you will have that back. Just a few items to note in here. The salaries of teachers and students will show overspent because of the switching and without using people's names, the person moving into the math position, the person backfilling the math position, and then other turnover that we had and traffic changes. So it's the overspend there is offset by savings and other areas of the budget that we previously talked about. You will see on special ed credit tuition, there is a number that's actual. It's in there as actual because it's actually been charged. But that's where we created this budget would be utilizing the special ed trust. And so we haven't requested that reimbursement yet for the trust. So we've removed the encumbrance, but since the actual charge is there, it's there until we receive the reimbursement from the trust. And then just the salaries of the special ed teachers was 2.0 FTE to 2.4 FTE. So that's why that's showing a little bit overspent. And I think that was all the highlights I had.
What was the special education change? The 2.0 of?
2.4.
So I don't know if anyone explained on that?
Sure, we had one of our special ed teachers moved from full-time to part-time.
Oh, okay. Never mind. You just dragged my memory.
That was easy, Ellen.
I didn't remember 2.4.
Then once you're done signing those, I'll grab them before I go to transition.
Okay, thank you. Office report?
Great, thank you very much. I would be asking this evening, if you recall, this board, when we were budgeting for this fiscal year, we moved a sizable amount of money out of the operating budget, the draft operating budget, with a reliance on the special education trust to take care of our tuition bill for students in special education for this year for our district. And so in order for us to have the trust expenditure, we would be looking for a motion this evening to the public board to approve the special education trust fund expenditure. So if we need to dig into that with any detail, I would request that we do that in public, just given the size of our special education student population. And if it becomes identifiable based on the information that we would provide, but this was information that we had shared prior when we were budgeting for this year. So we just need to have the board take action on that. While I just alluded to that in my budget report as well.
Just because one of the things that trustees want is the
Correct. It just needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the special education trust fund expenditure. Yeah, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Curriculum Corner is, there are two editions of it now. It's a video interview of our principals highlighting all of the things happening academically within our schools. The first week, it was three or four different principals from different levels. This most recent taping included our very own Mr. French. I did link the first edition of it so you could kind of get a flavor of what it was. It's hosted by Kristi Andruski and Eric Chellis, who is our newest A and B coordinator, was able to tape that. Do you want to talk about your experience yesterday?
Sure.
Yeah, it was yesterday.
It was yesterday, yeah. It was a lot more high-tech than I anticipated with, you know, the lapel mics and they make sure it was hidden underneath. And it was really well done. Yesterday, it was all about competency-based education and talking about me doing the reporting and had the progress reports to come out. It was myself, Kate Lucas from Stratum, and the new principal, Mr. Andrew Ryan, and then Chris Andruski. And I, so it turned more into a conversation between the four of us and a discussion about SAU-wide, what we're doing with CBE, but also, you know, in our schools. And we hope that it answers a lot of the parent questions that parents have had over the last couple of years about kind of the why behind alma reporting or CBE reporting and the benefits to all of our students. And I think from pre-K through 12th grade. So it's, yeah, it was a little nerve-wracking being on camera and all that type of thing because I'm not used to that. You know, where I can't, you know, there's no concentrating. It's just it was live. So it was, it was pretty awesome. And Chris did a great job facilitating, and I'm happy I did it. And I'm happy that our families and our parents are seeing what we're doing, hearing what we're doing in schools.
So where can it be seen?
I, uh, I don't know when it's going to be completed.
So it's been taped?
It's been taped, yeah.
So the sample is, because I can put it on now, I'm sorry, but that's the first round?
Correct. Yes. So just to give you an example of what it was like that Brandon was going to be going through, we'll be sending this out in our monthly superintendents update. So at the end of the month, there'll be opportunities, I think, for our, this board wants the link becomes available to send it to the board. So you can kind of get a view. And then Brandon will send it home with his principal, Michelle, we think you choose to send it home so that the community gets to see it. She's like, here's exactly what he's talking about. I like it. It's a different way for us to communicate with people. It's a different way for us to get information out. Something other than, you know, building structures or review revision or COVID or things. It's purely academic-based. It's all about teaching instruction.
And it gives you a sense of, although we're different across the board in our SAU 16, it shows the collaboration. I mean, you can sense the collaboration between schools that in many areas, we're on the exact same page. And we just might get there a little bit differently, which is, which is awesome.
Yeah, I think that's exciting. I'm sure it's bringing people out of their comfort zone now. But it is, it is, it's more natural probably as a viewer, but less natural as a participant, I would say.
Yeah.
Like one of those things. Yeah. It'd be good to get the link up on our main site, too.
Yeah.
So everyone can see.
Happy world, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's always available on Bluehawk Media, which is the main hub, main YouTube channel for SAU 16, where any meeting, including our meeting here, is always stored. The video of every meeting is archived there as well. So we'll make sure that we widely distribute that. You'll be a star. Start sending autographs. The school safety and Alice training, this is just being born out of our most recent school security and student safety task force meeting that we had. I think Tiffany, you're going to be reporting out on that, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
But I wanted to just highlight and remind for the purpose being in minutes, as well as anyone who watches the, these meetings that we do have on our website, an entire section devoted to safety. That we talk a lot about our Alice training for not only our elementary school students, but our secondary students. We have the scripts of what teachers and our trainers use for those two levels. You'll find there are two very different tones, very different approaches. There's an hour-long video for each of the two presentations that we did. It was associate superintendent Esther Asbell. Three years ago, we did presentations to elementary parents, also did presentations for secondary parents. So those videos are there. There are a ton of links to look at, different safety features or programming, measures that we take that we want to share within SAU 16. We don't want to put all of our secrets. We don't want the bad guys to get our secrets. But there's a lot that we do that we just want to keep steering parents to so they can feel good about, given recent events last spring and early summer, that their students are safe in our schools, that we go to extreme measures. SAU 16 is viewed as the model in the state. I think Tiffany, you heard that loud and clear from the police chiefs in our SAU. But we don't rest on those laws. We want to keep adding. We want to keep improving. So that means we want to keep sharing the information with people and helping them feel comfortable. And if they don't, to reach out directly first to their school principal and talk about that. I know in our joint board meeting, a mom had shared that she had heard a friend's daughter was feeling traumatized by the Alice training. So we respect and honor that. We want to acknowledge that. We want to help not only mom, but mom's child through that and make sure that the principal has an opportunity to do that with the students at the school if there's such an issue. So I just want to talk about it as much as we can. We can try and talk about it in all of our board meetings. Make sure we're circling back with our parents who are expressing feeling that way. Because we don't want any student to be feeling unsafe while we're trying to train them how to be safe, if that makes sense. That's not, that's not our intent. And I know that you had some drills
Yeah.
that had come up and
I can talk about those.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've had two so far, and they're, they're two of the, of the less stressful drills. We had a drop over hole in case of tornado or storm coming through the building or through the area. And a secure campus, and that's used typically. If there's an emergency within a building, we had an actual secure campus happen with a child with a broken arm recently. And it just gives, it gives the child the privacy that they need as they're exiting the building. You know, so we've had those. We do have an evacuation coming up, which we're going through with our staff at the moment right now. Right now, it's scheduled for Monday, and I'll be informing parents tomorrow. For every, for the Alice drill, we always let the parents know prior to the drill and explain what the drill is for and how we do it. And we also had, I just brought this up, yeah, we also have books that our teachers have access to to share with their students. One is called "I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared." That's something that, that our first school counselor has in her office that our staff have access to to help them guide those discussions with our students. So yeah, it's, it's something we take very seriously. And the more information we get to parents to help their kids process through it, you know, the better. So it's, you know, like Dr. White said, it's something we want to stay on top of. And if parents do have questions or concerns, then they're always welcome to reach out to me and talk.
Thank you. And then we usually sometimes follow up after the fact with an email, too, right?
Yeah.
Which is like, sometimes
Yeah, that it went well and the kids were our, our kids are they're accustomed to taking these types of things very seriously. And I'm proud of them every time we have one because it's, it's something they do very well for the evacuations and for the lockdowns when we have those. We usually try to get Chief Page here involved and our Director of Security at the SAU. We invite him, if he's available, to come over for these as well.
I put on the agenda that we wanted to, that wanted to get ahead of public hearing on the budget deliberative session in January, February, respectively. And I know that Melissa had had some exchange with the town on those. So what I'm proposing, at least for the public hearing on the budget, is on January 10. That is in the window of the week in which public hearings on budgets can be permitted or scheduled for SB 2 towns. And as far as the deliberative session, it would be that first week of February, February 4th being the first day that a deliberative can be held, 11th being the last. I never recommend waiting for the last day because if you have a snow day, you're not allowed to reschedule by law unless there's, I think, some act of God that allows you to reschedule. So people would have to come out in the snow. And that would be safe for residents of East Kingston. So it would be my proposal for February 4th, but Melissa had some information as well.
Yeah, Grace from the town reached out, and the select board was recommending that February 4th date. They were tentatively proposing the same times we did last year, which they were at 10:00 AM and we were at 1:00.
Correct.
We had talked about, you know, we want to switch with them. I think for, for me, the later one will work better. I know last year, Andy and I both coached basketball, and we probably love games that Saturday morning. So I want to call, probably work better for
Yeah, I think one is a great time, too.
Okay.
Yeah. And the public hearing on the budgets, typically, we have the hearing and then it's followed by our board meeting. It's a more limited agenda in that we tackle the budget predominantly. We typically, we close the meeting having a budget that we feel is ready to go forward to deliberative session. And so if that, if that date works, we'd like to lock that into our master calendar. What we're trying to do, too, is we always manage, we have seven school districts, as you know, seven school boards, five of which follow an SB 2 governance schedule. And that means that we typically have four weeknights, Monday through Thursday, and we're going to get five public hearings. So there has to be an overlap with someone. And so we try to strategically schedule those ahead of time so that we're aware of it. Because we have one Director of Finance and Operations and one Assistant Director of Finance and Operations. And we can work with that. And so I appreciate having the old events up on that in October for a January meeting.
I think both of those dates look good. We don't need to
No action.
No action.
No, we'll just schedule those and we'll put those forward and on the calendar so that the public's aware of when this pop.
Well, we have our first iteration of the budget at the next meeting.
We'd like it to be here in November.
Yeah.
All of our boards are going to be in November because we have to settle the SAU budget next Monday with the joint board. Paper Education America, I linked here as well. It's an online tutoring service. We had received some information back in September from the Department of Education about tutor.com, which is a free service that the state was paying for to provide K through 12 tutoring services, excuse me, 6 through 12 tutoring services for students in state elementary. We dug into a little bit, a couple of superintendents pushed back, and we had the Department of Education attorney involved in the conversation because our concern was they, tutor.com had not yet signed a data privacy agreement, which by law, we have to have a data privacy agreement, particularly with any software or vendor, software vendor or vendor who's going to work with students because student privacy is now protected even more strictly under the interesting law. They were working towards it. The other piece was they don't hire the tutors. They work with a third party who has the, that does the vetting and hiring of tutors, which means we didn't have, so imagine here in East Kingston or at CMS, a student from East Kingston, sixth grader going online to tutor.com and working with someone and not knowing really whether or not that person's been vetted through a background check. And it's 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. And that made us feel a little creepy. So we weren't real confident in that. The commissioner has since come out and said that they believe that they're well within the law of the signed data privacy agreement, which is, which is great. But it still hasn't solved the issue of who's hiring, who's doing the background check. We look for a solution to that because we don't want other districts getting free tutoring and our students aren't getting any. So we discovered Paper Education, and they're fairly expensive. They are a K through 12 tutoring service. We entered a pilot program, so I did misspeak when I, we were at the curriculum philosophy. We're in a pilot program with just 6 through 12 through the end of December. And then we are going to be K through 12 in January. And we got a pretty significant grant from paper. It's a $62,000 contract, to which we are only paying $9,000 total, not East Kingston, the SAU. So we felt that that was close enough to free, that the tutors in paper are employees of paper, that we know that their hiring process is one that we would follow if you walked into the SAU office and got fingerprinted and turned on the background. And there are a lot of safeguards that are built in with regard to who students are working with as tutors. So I just wanted to provide the link for you to check out their website and see information, just to make them, that they're aware of that. Come January, we'll be turning online, working with our elementary principals about how we can
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to see K through 5 included in the index. And then also to, for the older students, does paper have like 24-hour time, too? Like
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're 24/7 as well.
Oh, they are. Okay.
You know, anything like my senior.
Right.
He's wide awake at midnight.
Yeah.
Or in the morning because he worried about something, get online or something. And take care of, you know, whatever it is in the evening. Just take care of weekends. Holidays might be a little tricky, but by month.
By month.
Thank you. But as far as like nights off hours and weekends, that's their, that's their specialty. Because during the school day, they're typically in classrooms and with teachers and such. It's designed really for the student who's in the middle of doing something or, you know, if you're like I was, I'd sit there in math class and I'd understand it in math. And then I'd go home and I'd look at it like, I just don't remember what we did. I can get to somebody right away that's able to help me with that in the moment, which is the most important piece of the tutoring. Also planned tutoring where you have an upcoming test or assignment and you get scheduled help with that. Somebody walks you through it. So we thought it was pretty good value. We thought that maybe paper's trying to break into New Hampshire nationally, and we have several school districts in the southeast region, which is about 23 school districts in the seacoast area that are going to be working with them. And so we, yeah, we're looking forward to the pilot as we work through the end of December and then add it. And I have one other item.
Just one sec.
I'm sorry, Melissa.
Abby, I just want to let you know that we do still have sixish minutes left on our public input period, if you do want to participate. Just that's enough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to just remind the board that we do have non-public, there are two items that I want to bring up. One, I can say is that we're going to be discussing, we just conversations for support staff. And I think it's important for the public to know that that conversation can take place in non-public because it falls under item A. The numbers are not yet known, and we're not attaching anything in public to individuals. But I do want the public to know that we will be doing that in non-public. And the other item falls under retirements, reservations, nominations. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, approval of our public board meeting minutes from September 14. Did you have any changes?
I did not see any.
One, Brandon, I wanted to ask you what under your principal's report, it said Mr. French spoke to having families attend all school assemblies this year. The way I read that made it sound like you would have families attending all the assemblies. I don't think that was what you meant. I think you meant if a child was presenting, it would be attending. So I, I think we just want to edit that.
If a child was presenting or performing.
At the assem, yes. Just so that people, it isn't confusing to parents that everyone would be invited for all assemblies. Okay, that was
Yeah, I think it, it gives further clarification. I didn't read that at that, but it's, it's further clarification. Have you interpreted that, I think it's good to change.
Okay, so with that added, I'll make a motion to approve this September 14 meeting minutes. All those in favor? Aye. Staff handbook.
Yep, so I'm just gonna, before I get to that, just to my regular principal's report.
Okay.
We have all conferences coming up next Thursday, and which is the 28th, October 27th. And they're all going to be student-led conferences as we started last year, K through 5, and we're excited about that again in year number two. Our enrollment as of last week was 131 students, 22 in kindergarten, 28 in first grade, 12 in second grade, 22 in third grade, 19 in fourth grade, 28 in fifth grade. We had an amazing open house a couple of weeks ago that was a family, a family-oriented open house, which is a bit different from what has been done in the past year. And it was totally student-centered, with students kind of leading the show with their parents around their building. And the feedback from families was, it was awesome. And obviously, they enjoyed it. The feedback from the staff was the exact same. It was something they haven't done here before. And we were so excited to make it a, a family event. Our UA teachers, our PE and art music, they, for the first time, the ones that are here who have gone through more of the parent information night, for the first time felt that they were part of it because the scavenger hunt, the things the classroom teachers plan for their, their families, involved every UA and stopping right there and visiting the rooms. Mr. Kay had students on the drum set. Mrs. Bastille had artwork all throughout the building. Our steam room was by far the biggest hit of the night. I think every kid spent, you know, five to 10 minutes in their steam room with their parents, showing them kind of what they're already learning just in the first month of school. So again, it was, it was an amazing night that, that that our students really put on. We had 115 out of our 131 families attend, which was amazing. Yep.
It's absurdly high.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah. So we are very excited about that. We have our Harvest Fest coming up again, the 28th, where students are going to be participating in different events throughout the day. So we're, we're kind of in that, in that Harvest Fest season that the kids are excited about. I wanted to include our community engagement. We had our senior social this morning. And this was an opportunity for some of our community members to come in. It was PTO facilitated. And they coordinated the whole thing. I just coordinated the events with our students here in the building, with our teachers. But we had our kindergarten students doing a poem about apples. And we had our third and fourth grade, some of our third and fourth grade leaders talking about legacy letters that we started last year that our third and fourth grade students, it's a type of pen pal type thing. It's not something that they have direct on the person. Mrs. Ward started that last year with her, their fourth grade students, and the library's involved in that. So it's, it's something that they talked about today and some of our, some of our community members today took the legacy letters along with them to get them all rolling again. And we also had, Mr. Kay had all of our fifth grade students sing a couple of songs. And our new EKES rock band, which was amazing today to hear them after only a few rehearsals performed today, "Stand By Me." And the feedback that we received just in that short time was a lot of thanks and appreciation for making it happen on the PTO. So it was, it was a great way to start the year for them. We have the introduction to technology that Dr. Brandon talked about a couple of weeks ago, scheduled for November 16th here at school at 4:30 PM. Amy McDonald, one of our former parents who works in the SAU, is going to be here to lead anyone that wants to come learn more about how to use technology and access apps and Zoom and things like that, scheduled on that date, so November 16th, 4:30 PM. And our first community engagement meeting that Andy and I sit on is scheduled for October 24th. At the November meeting, along with the budget, I'll be talking about reviewing our, our fall data benchmarking at that meeting as well. And last, we spent a lot of time over the summer revamping our EKES staff handbook. And the majority of it comes straight from the teacher contract. A lot of the wording and language comes straight from the teacher contract, in addition to the board policies that we have listed on our, on our board webpage. And all of our teachers have reviewed it. And, um, provided feedback, uh, that we kind of kept going back and forth. There's a working document, I think probably since last March.
Yeah, sounds right.
Doctor Livingston, who was our, our former, um, interim director of H R, um, she, she kind of took the lead on that and, uh, got the ball rolling. And again, it was a, it was a working document right up until last week. So it, 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 there's a lot of time and effort, uh, that was spent by many people and, um, our, our teachers are pleased that it's kind of, uh, that, that term one-stop shopping, that they're not looking all over the place for board policy, teacher contract language, uh, school policy. It's all right there for them to view and to refer to if it went needed.
Did you say it already went out?
The teachers have had access to it.
Oh, okay.
The teachers have had access and it's not public or anything right now.
Okay, yeah. The only thing that I just thought as you were talking is, um, would it be rest of the board goals on here too? Or would that not be something that you would see in a handbook, staff handbook?
Typically, it wouldn't be on the staff handbook.
No, okay.
Because of the operational nature of it, where the board's a governance.
Okay.
Body. Um, I think it's super appropriate to have the board goals on the, uh, the agenda. Um, but we can also, if you'd like, add it to the board website. That might be another appropriate, appropriate place for that. Uh, but on a, on a staff handbook, because it's operational, we typically, we can find them there. I mean, if the board was to compel us to do it, we would do it, but it's just not usually a appropriate spot for it.
No, no, it's just like. Yeah, I just wasn't there.
Yeah.
No, Brandon, this is, I, I mean, I read through it all. It's, it, it's very well done and I like that everything is, everything's linked. So it's not, it's not a matter of kind of digging and trying to find things. If you have a question, it's a question and answer format. Fun answer if you can like to it. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've had a handbook in the six years I've been here. Not that I remember. I remember the student one, but not the staff, so.
I remember reading one when I worked here. But I don't think it was this in depth, but I do think it's really good too. And I think that if you were like new to our S A U and you sat down and read this, you know, you'd have a lot of questions to answer. So, um, obviously the staff would read it now, but any new staff, I feel like they almost need like an hour to
Yeah.
come in on the clock and just be able to sit down because it is important. It just goes over so much, so.
This is part of the, um, the mandatory trainings, I guess you could say, that our staff have to do every year as they come on board, whether they're thirty years into it or year one. You know, like the Alice trainings and sexual harassment, that type of thing, that they all have to do with this as part of their kind of mandatory, um, trainings that they put. You have to sign off and view this, you know, every single year.
And then I just had a question about the field trips and that C P R and the first aid.
Yep.
Certification. Is that like a one-time thing that they would have to do or is that something that used to be updated?
C P R is every two years.
Every two years?
Yep.
So that, okay.
So we were, um, we were certified, uh, I need to check the dates, but we're, we're all today for field trips now.
Oh, yes, you take it as like a whole staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we are like to motion to approve the handbook?
Please.
Okay. And then, um, do we need to say anything about, so if there are updates to the handbook that are kind of inconsequential, like a staff replacement name, a, a date change for next year, those types of things that don't really affect, then, um, it won't need to come to the board for those sort of updates. They'll just be done annually?
Yeah, if there's a substantive change, change in policy, requires us to change something significant, or if, um, new superintendent changes the professional tire and has expectations for, you know, those kinds of substantive changes, that would come back to the board for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff handbook. Can I also get the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brandon. Um, Chair's report, we'll move on to the board committee assignments. I don't have anything because we haven't met yet. Superintendent hasn't met policy. We do have a meeting scheduled.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I will be away, but Heather's there, so.
It's on the calendar. Okay. Um, so I won't have anything till November. We already spoke, the engagement meeting.
Yep.
Superintendent's search, I guess we won't get an update from Andy. Tiffany, you wanna speak to yours?
Yes. So, first A T and security. So I have, um, takeaways from that is that the state received ten million from the federal government for school safety, for school safety upgrades. And that all of our elementary schools have applied for grants. Here at East Kingston, we, um, looking for radios and a boost in self, um, service.
Very bad.
Thank you, so, could be good. And so another takeaway, um, is Rich Kane has been working hard to meet all of the annexes set forth by the security. And like you've mentioned, we're doing the fire drills and I think he did a bus evacuation drill too, right?
He did, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all underway and, yeah, it's commendable, the work that we do here with safety and security, for sure.
Yeah.
Yes. And so then House Bill eleven seventy-eight was mentioned at the meeting. And, let's see. We've gotten to go to. Um, so House Bill eleven seventy-eight, I just wanted to read like a brief summary of what that is. And that, um, it's prohibiting the state from enforcing any federal statute, regulation or presidential effective order that restricts or regulates the right of the people to keep and bear arms. And, um, Dr. Ryan had presented this with a follow-up, an excerpt from the, from the asked questions from the New Hampshire Department of Justice, Office of the Attorney General. And what it talks about is what is the effect of House Bill eleven seventy-eight on school safety? And it basically says reporting a potential or perceived threat to safety does not violate the law. The principle of see something, say something remains a critical component of protecting public safety in our communities, especially in our New Hampshire schools. And so under New Hampshire law, students are not authorized to bring or possess firearms within a safety school zone without prior written authorization from the superintendent or designee. State and local law enforcement officers are empowered to respond, investigate and take action with respect to any potential threats to school pursuant to their authority under the New Hampshire criminal law. The passage of RSA one fifty-eight E, House Bill eleven seventy-eight does not alter this. So I'm not sure how I get that. Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that was perfect. And then we asked the question of the chiefs.
Yes.
What would you do differently now with this, this bill as law? And Chief LePage specifically said, we would do nothing differently. If you call us, we're coming. If you don't feel safe, we're coming.
Yes, and I think that's the biggest takeaway in the presentation. And then reading this through again is, you know, the, it was legislated and passed and signed in like June.
Yes.
And so I think it was good just to have like a little update, so there's no confusion about that. So what it means and that it just, we're not really gonna be changing anything. There's still state and tour safety, there's policies that are in place. And I think we're all ahead for that. Um, unless I missed anything, did you think anything?
It was, it was the Rich Kane Show, uh, for sure. He had a lot to update on. Uh, he provided a lot on safety, security, the E O Ps and, and you touched on, on the emergency operation plans that we filed and were in compliance with the rest of the state, so.
Yes.
Um, yeah, yeah, I think you covered it well.
Yeah, that's huge. We're definitely, um, are, we're in compliance. I think it's a lot of wear and I think they do a great job of that. And then, the S A U Budget Advisory Committee. Sorry, I put the notes right on. So, uh, we met and reviewed the proposed S A U sixteen for school year F Y twenty-four budget. And we gave some, uh, feedback and on additional details that we thought constituents would want to see. And that is going to be presented, uh, this Monday, October seventeenth at six P M at Julia's Restaurant at S S T, uh, Linden Street in Exeter. And it's just a great time to come and hear that and get, you know, public thoughts, so we encourage that. And you can always email us. I was talking to Molly earlier and that proposed drafted budget will be on the S A U sixteen website. So if you wanted to review it ahead of time, under, uh, S A U sixteen budgets and elections. The request for the software upgrade two is on there. So there's gonna be a request for software for the accounting that are distributed and you can get more information on that too on the website. That's all I have for that. And the wellness committee. So I have not heard anything on that, so, uh, I'm assuming that's maybe happening until like November?
It will, um, certainly be convenient once all of the boards have their budgets. Because that's Molly's, Molly oversees the wellness committee, that's because it, it really is, is part of our, um, oh gosh, I'm forgetting the, the legal term. Has to do with loss. And so it's something that Primex requires us to do and the law requires us to do is to have a wellness committee. Uh, and so, um, she's overseeing that, so it will be another month and a half or so before she's able to, to breathe. Uh, and she, she's put together, so thank you, uh, for being on that committee. And we are still waiting to hear in a couple of other board members from other boards because we want representation across the board.
I'm looking forward to it. All right, we'll also have to add to the board the new committee from the joint board.
We will. We'll have, I think, some information for you on the seventeen.
At the next meeting.
Yes, uh, we'll be actually leading the joint board through an activity that may, um, upon reflection, have the board consider something different.
Okay.
Um, and so I, I work with Patrick on that. And seeing as I think you're chairing, you and I will chat.
Yeah. Okay. So that's all.
Uh, I think you saw some glimpses of the emails that we had exchanged.
Yes, yep.
I'll explain what you tell what we're gonna do, but.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to goal updates. So for goal number one, um, as Brandon said in his reporting, we're gonna be discussing that next month. And we'll have the fall data and benchmarking, so, um, nothing new until probably next year. Um, and for goal three, we've, uh, we had our first meeting on the five-year capital improvement plan. Um, Dr. Ryan presented us with a optimized format, kind of getting that information together. And, uh, Wayne and Brandon are gonna be working on populating that data and then we'll be meeting with the substantive priorities. Give us a, a better picture of improvements that need to be made to the building.
Yeah, Wayne was very engaged, excited to see that.
Knows his building.
Yes, he does.
Okay, um, old business. I think we have a new thing. Let's go to the technology, I think. About, uh, new business?
Technically, with fall, uh, would be the wage and compensation discussion for support staff that will be taking into non-public.
Okay. All right, and we already, um, I'll provide the communication from Grace and, and reply back to her on the dates and times.
Perfect. Now, but I'll let Sharon know, uh, in the office so she can lock it in.
Okay. All right, um, I think that's everything. All right, so, um, we'll head into non-public. Under R C ninety-one eight three two.
Can we, do we get another public input or not before you go non-public?
Um, no, but if, if you have a comment, I'm, I'm fine.
I got just two quick things.
Yeah.
This grant for the tutoring, who, who gave us the grant?
So the, uh, the company is called Paper Education America. And they granted fifty-two and change, fifty-two thousand and change. So it's, uh, basically they've waived close to fifty-two thousand and change.
Okay, so probably next year then, that will not be repeated, the grant will not be repeated or?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Um, I don't know. I know that right now our, our bill is for nine thousand for the year. Um, and it's a one, it is a one-year contract. Um, I don't know what next year looks like. We, we didn't look that far out.
Okay. And for Brandon, um, on the, uh, program, was it the sixteenth and over, I may not have the date, yeah.
Sixteenth, remember I am.
Yeah. Uh, how are you gonna get word out and is there anything that people need to bring or everything's provided or what?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to be, um, sending you an email with all the information to pass on to your, uh, to your peers. It's gonna go through the library as well. And I'm gonna talk to Andy, um, including Anthony's letter, um, that goes out to the library. And I, I would love treading in the Carriertown news. I'm not sure if it's, not sure what their deadline is, but it's.
Should be good.
It should be good if you do it soon, yeah.
I'll pass that on to Andy about the, um, newsletter at the Carriertown.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
May I ask a question? Um, David, when they do the budget presentation on the budget, are they gonna talk about, um, I know you guys don't usually focus on revenue too, too much. Are you gonna talk about revenue loss and how you're compensating, can you like to share?
That's, that would be a great, uh, for an S A U.
I mean, cause you have the retirement, which is going down, which is okay, but
Correct.
also the one-time revenue loss that came from the state and the retirement, um, funding that we got, all that's going away, so the tax impact's gonna be.
So on an S A U budget discussion, that would not be reflected in the budget presentation, but for each of the seven school districts, most definitely.
Okay, I just want them to understand because when it goes to like the tax impact.
Yep.
It's, it could be significant and it's something that the constituents are gonna have a really hard time thinking of raising the budget.
Correct.
That's the state's primary that they gave us. It's a more official inflation. Um, I also just wanted to ask for the C I P, or I'm sorry, for your capital plan, are you guys including how you're funding it in the, um, amortization out for it so we can see?
Not yet, not on the financial side of it. Presently, right now, it's gonna be to prioritize what the projects are.
Yeah, but wouldn't funding be part of that?
So funding estimates and then when we look at what, so they're gonna be prioritized first, uh, by safety.
Yep.
Right? And so you follow by safety, preservation of asset, ongoing work.
Yeah.
And so we want to identify first with the board and the school priorities are as the board. And the principal may have two different ideas about what the priority is.
Yep.
There's an estimate of funding for it. If, if we, well, when we get to that part, that's where we have to look at what the funding impact and amortization is gonna be.
And what your debt, deadline is.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and I was gonna say, do you have like a list when you put it together for qualified as a capital project versus just a regular budgetary item? Is it like the standard fifty thousand dollars, not a regular?
No. Um, we have had that depth of conversation.
I think we wanted to include everything.
Yeah.
So even if it was something as simple as this is a five hundred dollar repair, but it's a safety concern, let's put it on there.
Okay.
And I think we're, we're just looking to have some better visibility and Wayne knows the building, um,
Yeah.
inside and out, and we just want to make sure that we understand, kind of, you know, the major thing is the roof right now. That's the, that'll be the big discussion this year.
No, I think it's, I think it's awesome. I just think, um, it might be a good idea when, when it's totally done, when you're like totally at the end.
Yeah.
To list qualifications or lack thereof as a transparency item. I know for ours, there's a lot of confusion about what's in there, why it's in there, and what it leaves, what that means. So just maybe kind of putting that kind of listing together might really help you so that when people are reading it, um, after the fact, it doesn't come back and be like, you didn't include this, or why didn't you, or why is this in there? It's just gonna really help. Um, and I just wanted to say for the support staff, if we can, I need to bring them up to the level that everybody else is, because we're losing them or we're lucky not losing more. I don't know, I was, it's not that much, it's not that much. But thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Abby. Where's the motion, sir?
All right, and this is gonna be under?
Should be listed.
A, yeah. Motion, okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Tiffany?
Bye, guys.
Good, all right. Seven oh five, we are back in public. I would like to make a motion to, um, authorize Brandon to pay out additional compensation to our paraprofessionals who, upon us not being able to find a substitute, are required to cover our classroom at a rate of eighty dollars per day or forty dollars for a half-day. You know, second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for personnel.
Great. A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
All right. And then we will adjourn at seven. And then we will adjourn at seven oh six.
Great. Thank you.